It's 5:30. I'd like to call the meeting into order. If you would stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Okay, welcome, everyone. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeBoer.
Present.
Trustee Gett.
Present.
Trustee Kazam.
Present.
Trustee Reichert.
Present.
Trustee Wigginton.
Present.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Okay, so we do have two trustees who would like to participate remotely. I'd ask for a motion to permit that.
I make a motion to admit that.
Second.
All right.
I believe they're both absent for work purposes. Is that correct? Okay. We'll let the record be like that.
All right. Thank you, counsel. Any discussion on the motion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeBoer.
Standing.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Kazam.
Aye.
Trustee Reichert.
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Standing.
Okay, that passes. Both trustees are allowed to participate remotely. We would be at approval of the Board of Trustees' minutes from April 16, 2024. I'd ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
I move.
Motion seconded.
Motion seconded. Any questions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing now all those in favor of approving the minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. We would be at comments from the audience. If anyone is here tonight to make comments on agenda items, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and try and keep your remarks under five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Pete Duvendak. I'm actually here representing the Peoria Heights Chamber of Commerce. I'm the treasurer for the chamber. And I just wanted to comment on just a few things that might affect things going forward. The biggest thing was, I understand that there had been some concerns from some trustees potentially regarding the integrity of the chamber's financial statements and our accounting. I became the treasurer in January of 2023, and I can understand why there might have been concerns prior to that. I actually was the one that inherited the books, if you will. And, you know, we've had some ups and downs, there's no question. Since January, I'm actually an accountant. I've been an accountant since 1981. I was with McGladdery &amp; Pullen, now McGladdery, RSM. I'm currently the president and CEO of I-Work Medical Facilities in Peoria. So I brought, I think, a bit more to the table from the financial perspective for the chamber as treasurer than they had prior. And you can't really blame some of the people in the past. They didn't have accounting experience necessarily. My goal is, when I do eventually leave the chamber, is to make sure I bring in someone comparable to me as the treasurer for the next two years. But the point I wanted to make is, we've done some significant improvements since I took control as the treasurer. And I can, you know, I probably spent a couple of weeks going back, I think, three years previous to when I came into the position to clean up the books, three years prior to me coming in. And then since then, we've been almost a year and a half. So we've got about four and a half years where cash has been proven, everything's reconciled. Our books are as clean as they can be. They're in compliance with generally accepted accounting principles. We tie to the bank and any outside financial institution, which we really weren't doing prior to that. So when you read a financial statement from us in the future, you know it's tied to an outside independent source, which would be the financial institutions that we do business with. We've eliminated a lot of accounts that we didn't need. We've cut back on the number of accounts we have with financial institutions down to two or three. It's much cleaner. It's easier to work with. It's much easier to understand if you were to read our financial statements. There's no question, I have, and I come from a strong financial background, I have very high confidence in the integrity of our financial statements at this point in time. If I were to go back four years ago, without having gone back and improved and kind of revamped things that we were doing, I don't think I would be confident presenting the financial position of the chamber four years ago. I have complete confidence now. From a credibility perspective, I think I have the credibility to be able to say that. So the point being is, I know there's been some trustees that have, you know, honestly, they've been on as a trustee for some time, and they've had a history with the chamber where we weren't so good in reporting our financial information. I just want to assure you all that when we give you a financial statement or a budget, it's gone by me. I have a lot of experience with it, and I would stand by them 100% that they're, again, in compliance with GAAP, the IRS, and that we tie to the bank. I mean, improving cash is a huge thing from an accounting perspective. We didn't have that before. So you know there's an outside source that is verifying basically what we're showing you if it were to come up. Trying to think if there's anything else, but I guess what I'd, I can't open it up now, I know for questions, but if you, if anybody has questions or concerns, they could feel free to contact me with the chamber, and I'd be happy to provide additional information. If you need financial statements from us regularly, a copy of our budget, which I think you do have, but if you want regular financial statements, we'd be happy to provide them. At our meetings now, our treasurer's report includes financial statements for the prior month, year-to-date, previous-year comparisons. So pretty much any information we need. We're not very big, so once we got everything in line, it doesn't take a whole lot for us to keep up with this, and they're pretty simple to read. So I just wanted to offer that. I know it affects some of the things that you might be talking about tonight or in the future, and I think it's important for you to know that you can trust what we're providing you. And again, I know, first time you probably met me, or at least a few of you, if you would like to talk to me sometime later, I'd be happy to give you a further explanation, and then again, providing further information or answering any questions you guys might have.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Barb Malasio here on behalf of the Peoria Heights Chamber of Commerce. So thank you, Pete, for clarifying the, our financials and the standpoint that we are now. So I feel like, you know, we have proven that we have done our due diligence there with keeping up to date with our finances. So we just wanted to have an introduction to our treasurer. I mean, he's really done a lot of hard work. So I just want to just make the comment that we appreciate the support of the village. We are doing a wonderful job at the hosting the Taste of the Heights. Plans are going along really well, and we have some wonderful, great ideas for the Kris Kringle market that we hope to have here again this year in the Heights, and I believe it'll be discussed a little bit later on in, I'm in the meeting. But I just want to thank you for your continued support of the chamber and the events that we are hosting.
Thank you. Public comment so open?
Yeah. Eric Schmidt, representing RA Cullinan. Just wanted to come and make a comment about the award of the bid for the oil and chip work that was bid this year, and the fact that, just wanted you guys to consider that we are meeting all the requirements of the specifications, and would like for you to take that in consideration when you award the bid. So we like to lean on our past history of providing good work and also complying with all the traffic control requirements and all the other requirements of the contract. So just ask that you take that in consideration.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Amanda Sears. Sears like the store that doesn't exist anymore. I am the owner of Curious Bubbles that was in the Pabst, and I also own 1208 Durier. I just wanted, I was advised to come make you guys aware of a situation that's going on regarding my parking lot and my business. So 1208 Durier, we have a parking lot. It is Zoned B2. Due to some situations, unfortunately, I had to move my store from the Pabst to 1208 Durier that I do own. And unfortunately, all of the things that we do at Curious Bubbles, I'm currently not able to do at that property because, I'm sorry, it makes me emotional. I'm trying not to cry or pass out or something.
You're doing fine. Take your time.
So according to Chapter 10, 98 of the city code, or the village code, Ordinance 740, which was wrote in April 7, 1970, which was before I was even born, it says that I am not allowed to have events at my property because my parking lot's not big enough. Most Peoria Heights doesn't have their own parking lot. The property is historically a church, which is an event center in a way, if you think about it. I was told to just bring this to you guys' attention, just, it's kind of an antiquated zoning rule, and I have street parking as well. On Durier, it's three-hour street parking. And I am working with Rick. I have talked to Rick about this a few times, and I'm also in the process of getting, hopefully, getting the fire marshal in to do my capacity. But I'm doing everything I can to get it going, and this is a really major roadblock, and it's a big old bummer, and I'm sad. And I just wanted to bring it to your attention, and hopefully I can get help in resolving this issue, because I think I'm only like five or six spots short, apparently. It's a 19-stall parking lot. So, okay, thank you.
Well, let me say to you, thank you for being here, and we'll do everything we can to help you out. But you're in the right hands with Rick Pitzel. So Rick is the chairman of the ZBA. He knows everything inside and out. So he's your best advocate, so keep working with him.
Okay.
And he'll keep us updated, and he'll advise you on everything you need to do.
Okay.
All right. Thank you so much. If you need anything else, contact Mr. Sutner, myself.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Public comment going once, twice, public comment closed. We'd be at old business. Any old business to come before the board? All right. Hearing now, let's get right into new business. We have one item under public safety that Chief Decker, I know, wants to speak about. It's Resolution 2024-06, a resolution establishing three full-time firefighter positions within the Village of Peoria Heights Fire Department. Trustee Wigginton, I'd ask for a motion to approve?
I move to approve Resolution 2024-06.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. If it's all right with you, could we go to Chief Decker?
Oh, sure.
Because he has another meeting to go to, but we'll come right back to you after that. Is that okay, trustee?
That's fine.
Thank you, Mayor. All right. Hey, is this one? Can you hear me?
Yes.
I appreciate the opportunity, Mr. Decker, it's close time, to speak. Just want to give you a little bit of an update and talk about the plan moving forward, just to make sure there is no confusion. It's been a six-month process so far since I've been here. I met with all of you and had a really good dialogue. I still, I said this in the first meeting that I had after being here a few weeks, that I feel like everyone said the same thing. I think that everybody has the intention to make sure Peoria Heights is as safe as possible. I believe that. I think that the members that we have have been doing a good job. A little bit of background, this is a very busy district, a very busy district for our size. We, I think, should have had this number exactly somewhere around 13, 1400 calls per year. That, as I have said in one of the previous meetings, is busier than some of the districts in Peoria. This is very busy. Everything from fires to EMS calls, they respond up and down the hill, but we're going on a lot of different incidents. We have a total right now number of 18 members. Only, unfortunately, five of those members actually live in the village. However, more than, probably 10, I was trying to quickly figure it out before I came up here tonight, but 10 to 12 live within two and a half miles. They went to that model a number of years ago when they started having more and more difficulty attracting people who lived in the village. It's no one's fault. This is not just Peoria Heights issue. It is an issue across the nation. Volunteer fire departments have struggled for whatever reason, whether it's our economy causing people to have multiple jobs, or just the family unit not able to support volunteerism as much. But Peoria Heights is not alone. I talked to some of my friends at some other departments. They also are having the same struggles. The volunteers that we have, they are tremendous. I was shocked when I came here and I saw how often our members are staying here overnight. Some of them have, you know, spouses at home, but yet they are once a week, once every other week, whatever, they are spending the night here just to make sure that there is coverage. And taking that, or taking into account that they don't live necessarily within the village, and that would be ideal, they do that to offset not living really super close to the fire station. I've been impressed with their dedication. I've been impressed with their training. They train every Wednesday night. Sometimes it's EMS, sometimes it's fire, sometimes they're doing maintenance on an engine, but they do a really good job of working hard. A lot of young members, and that brings up another issue. Some of our young members may not be with us very long. They're looking at trying to get on full-time departments different places. We have one gentleman who's trying to get onto a police department. But they're good people. They're doing an excellent job. Unfortunately, and what kind of spurred where I was going with this, is there have been times where it's been difficult to get coverage. We first started with a stipend program that we have two people per day, and the goal is to do that until we can guarantee with some full-time members being here, that we would do two stipend personnel per day. It's worked well, but we have not been able to fill all the shifts. Even, one question was asked, what if we ask for money? There are just times where families have visions, a call for just an inability to fill every shift with stipends. So that's why in the beginning, I felt like the full-time member are the ones that we can hold accountable to make sure that we fill those gaps. From the very beginning, I said that my goal is to make sure that we have at all times at least two people on at least equipment going out the door. I would be joking, or I would be incorrect if I said that other fire department, other chiefs would think that that's adequate, but it is a minimum, and it's a minimum that I think is positive for the village, because it is assuring that we have representation from the village on every incident that we have in our community. So my goal was to have at least two people, and I very much understand budgets, and I would not want you to stretch yourself to a place that you can't afford it. I don't want to be that chief that would ever have to look at laying people off. It's not something that I would have wanted to do during my career, and I certainly wouldn't want to be the guy that has to tell them that the village should no longer support. So I believe in taking big steps to accomplish what we need. So I looked at hiring three full-time personnel and covering the other seat with a stipend position. And that's kind of what we settled on, and that's what the budget was passed, and that is my plan. So some ask, some ask maybe, how long do you think that that will be adequate? I can't tell you for sure. My plan is what's in front of me. I have no preconceived notion that next year I'm going to ask for this, and following year I'm going to ask for that. My plan is to come with three full-time firefighter positions, have the other seat with a stipend position, and then work hard over the next year to increase our volunteerism. I have some great members who are working on the presentation for me right now, two ICC's fire science program. We want to try to grab some of those young people who are eager to be full-time firefighters, and while they're in college, they want to spend some time at the firehouse. So we're going to try to get a hold of them before someone else does, I guess. Those are my future plans. I don't, I can't tell you, or I won't say that, you know, I'm going to plan to come back and ask for more. But one thing I wanted to be careful of is, I can't guarantee you that this is going to be the way it's going to be for any amount of time. If I don't, if I'm unable to keep volunteerism, I personally would see that as a failure on my part, because I'm at least going to do everything I can to try to keep as many volunteers involved in our department as possible. When we go through our hiring process, some will be determined based on who is hired, and I'm hopeful that maybe some that aren't hired full-time are not upset and choose not to volunteer. I don't necessarily expect that to happen, but I want to be cautious. I don't want to overpromise. So my goal is to increase our volunteerism. I think the best way to do that is through ICC. I've also talked with at least a couple of you about trying to reach out in the community, and I am willing to do as much as, or take any suggestion that you might have. I would, I would love to get an influx of people from within Peoria Heights who would like to help, who would like to volunteer, but unfortunately, it's difficult trying to attract volunteers. One thing that's made it difficult is our state. And I know, I'm not talking poorly about our state, but our state has taken a proactive stance in recognizing how difficult and dangerous firefighting is. A number of years ago, when I first started, if you were, let's say, a fire apparatus engineer, you would still be a fire apparatus engineer 20 years later. But now, the way the requirements have changed, each one of those certifications comes with a continuing education. So it's made it a little harder to keep those certifications, and it's caused some to not want to spend the time to become volunteers. However, I do believe in our plan. I believe that I can attract others. We are unfortunately going to lose a few in the next few months. I believe, not for anything bad, but I know one guy's going to be Peoria, another guy's going to be an officer. But we're also going to hopefully be bringing on someone in the near future. So I wanted to mention all that. If there's anything I missed, please ask. And what I did not want to do is cause concern for any of our residents. There have been times where it's been difficult to get coverage. My goal is, let's say, a year from now, even if we have the full-time person, and for some reason, we could not get someone to accept the stipend position on that day, we will still have representation immediately, and I think that's important. Because if there's a call for a working structure fire, and I have two sudden, a couple, last year, worked to make sure that our officers were given the authority to call for mutual aid if our members weren't on scene. And I think that's important, because if we didn't have somebody to respond, and let's say our officers are on a call, that they wouldn't be able to be there for 10 minutes. That's quite a bit of time. So as long as we at least have one full-time person, we will have representation there within a few minutes. Fortunately, this village is small enough that there aren't, and I'm used to a 12-minute response time in some areas, Peoria Heights is nothing like that. So I do believe in this. I can't guarantee that I won't have to ask for more in the future, but what I can guarantee is, I wouldn't do that and ask the village to overstretch ourselves by nature. Any questions?
Well, I'm going to just stop there and go back to trustee Wigginton to add anything he would like, and we'll open it up for questions and discussion.
Well, and I, and mayor, I'll definitely yield to questions, because I know he's on a time crunch, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll start with you. Do you have questions or comments?
Well, chief, would you, I, just for bringing this up to speed, so can you tell us a little bit, you mentioned mutual aid. Can you tell us, since you've come on, what changes you've done with that, and to try to expedite response times as well?
The, what I've done is encouraged the use of all mutual aid companies. We, our village has done a great job working with our volunteer communities. We have Vegas District in the state of Illinois, which allows us to, from the very beginning, set up, I guess, different response cars and response situations that would call for other units immediately. The volunteer organizations in the area, like Chillicothe and West Peoria, Dunlap, they have all signed on to automatic mutual aid agreements. But the city of Peoria won't agree to automatic mutual aid agreements. There's nothing negative about the city of Peoria, because they will in turn say, we'll come whenever you want us. All you have to do is request us, we'll send you as much as you need. So they are a great friend as well. They'll send us as much and more equipment than we could ever ask for. But their model, and we dealt with this in East Peoria as well, and we had the chief years ago who asked them to be on automatic mutual aid, and they came back with the same response, that we'll come whenever you want us, but not automatic mutual aid. So in dealing, in working with those three organizations, they became very close to them. So what I've encouraged is, if you roll out of the station and you know it's a working structure fire, I am totally supportive of those other entities coming. I believe it. But if they're going to drive through the community past other fire stations, I want to make sure that closer fire stations are coming as well. Because at the end of the day, my concern is for the residents, for the business owners, and the visitors to Peoria Heights. And as long, and if my family is ever here at some place and something were to happen, all I care about is that they get them out. I don't care, you know, who does necessarily. In saying that, our Peoria Heights members go to these other communities and help as well. In fact, more often do we go there and help them than they come and assist us.
Thank you, chief.
Chief Decker, are volunteer firefighters allowed to volunteer on more than one fire department at a time?
There are some that do. You know, years ago, they, it was, there were a lot of places that would not allow it, but because volunteerism has been so difficult, most places do allow it. We have some now who are on a couple departments, and as much as I would like to say, you know, be dedicated as that will serve us.
Well, the way I kind of view volunteering and the volunteer firefighters is kind of like a family a little bit, as you've said. So my thoughts for covering some of these shifts that we just don't have somebody because of family obligations or something, do we have the ability to reach out to, say, Chillicothe and say, do you have somebody that would like to come cover the shift for the stipend, because all of our guys are not available, in order to get that shift covered? Is that a possibility?
That's a good idea. We do at times, recently, one of the communities had an event that they knew that they would not be available. For instance, if there's a funeral that's close to the station, close to the department, if you have someone close to that, you want them to be able to attend. So other departments will reach out and cover those. This is a great idea. My only concern, sorry, I think I just want to think about it, put it into words, is to assure that the person we're getting fits the qualifications that we have.
Which, planning ahead, if you knew somebody was going to be covering, maybe ask them to come that when, you know, to a couple of Wednesdays, you know, they're like, yeah, I'd like to cover Saturdays, or something like that, for you guys having to come to some of the training to get to know some of the other guys too, if possible.
That is a good idea, and.
I mean, we might as well, I mean, you said they're willing to share, and volunteerism is down. It sounds like people are who we need to share as well. So not just Chillicothe, but any of the other area places that, I mean, everybody wants to make a little extra money, and they're not offering nearly as much as we are, but, and we're not trying to steal their guys, but we need a little extra help.
You know, that's funny you say that, because that's the one thing that is concerning. Speaking to the other chiefs, I wouldn't want to give the impression, because I think we do have a good environment. We have a great village. I mean, people like being here. So I don't want to give the impression that we're trying to steal them.
No, and keep it an open door, though, that if they've got somebody they need to cover, that our guys are willing to do the exact same thing. If we've got too many guys sitting around not, you know.
It's a good idea.
If we've got one day specifically that everybody's available, you know, see if anybody else needs our help, you know, covering, just so nobody's stressed you then.
Anyone else? Any other dialogue?
Well, just, so I've just want to like reiterate what I feel like we're voting on today. I mean, this is, we've already passed the budget, which stated that where we were allocating funds, so the funding has been addressed. I think what this ordinance is doing is codifying what, we want three people. We're giving direction to the, the Board of Fire Commissioners and Police Commissioners to have some sort of goalpost of where of goalpost of where they should be looking. I think the options that we've gone through, that has been raked over the coals, and it's water under the bridge. And we have an option before us, that is, we must make the best for our village as far as fire protection. I appreciate, Chief, your comments about not bringing something to us that would be more than we can handle. With that being said, how we got here, how we got to a balanced budget, we had to do some creative financing and timing. So I would ask that you think about that as well in the future, because as Administrator Sutton has said, our margins are very thin, and that is based on a timeline that doesn't include a full year of firefighters. So I think we're playing with very, very thin margins. I, I am very hopeful for upcoming revenue sources, but I think the reality of where our finances are is that we are currently pretty tapped out. So just like I said, I'm going to hold you to what you said, Chief, that you come to that. But I think what we have now is, we've considered, and we've overconsidered, and I think we're just, I think this ordinance just gives some direction to our, our police and fire commissioners.
Well, I also want, I thank you for bringing that up, Trustee Wigginton, and also to you, Chief Decker. I really appreciate all the effort that you've been putting into this. I know that you've been tasked with this job, and this is the proposal that you're putting forward that you feel puts the department in the best position. At the same time, I will say, I was one of the people that came to you and suggested to start off a little bit more conservatively, which is what I had hoped would happen with a chief, your position, and an assistant chief position, and really focusing on these stipends and rebuilding our volunteer fire department, the strength of our volunteer fire department. It is really difficult for me and to, I'm worried, I'm very concerned about the jump from our line item with the fire department in our last budget to what it is today. And as you say, you can't promise that this is going to actually suffice. We may have to get, hire even more people. And so...
I would like to say, Trustee Kazam, I don't believe I will be coming anytime soon to ask for more. If I did, I tell you that. I said earlier on the phone to someone that I've worked too long, too hard on my reputation, that I will never not be honest with you. So if I believe that's going to happen, I'd tell you. I, I really believe the positivity that we've gained from this moving forward, I believe we'll attract more volunteers. When I was on the phone with someone today, I said, what I can't guarantee you is, let's say all of a sudden, the village of Peoria Heights had an explosion in sales tax, great development continuing to increase, well, if you're going to increase call volume by 500 to 700 calls, then it may be necessary. That'd be a good conversation because the finances would support it. So I always practice something like this by saying, while I can't guarantee, I'll also say, I don't believe I'm going to be coming anytime soon to ask for more.
Okay, thank you. The other thing that kind of concerns me that I've thought about for this evening is, this is one of the biggest topics that we've dealt with as a board in my terms, my, you know, first term and the first year of my second term here. And I know that we have our fellow trustees participating remotely, but it's difficult, I don't know if they have anything to add, it's kind of difficult to hear them when they were saying the few comments that they've already said, and also for them to hear us, I believe. Maybe not as much now, but I know that I was communicating with Trustee DeVore when public comment was going on, and she was having difficulty hearing. Do we feel comfortable as a board voting on this this evening and not deferring it for another meeting while everyone can be here in participation?
I have no problem. I think they've heard enough, and we've got enough here to pass it if we need a majority. So I don't have a problem voting out of today. We can't push it off any farther. This needs to be addressed now, and time's running short. I think we got the people here, even if they weren't communicating remotely, to put a vote on this. That's, I say we go ahead and vote it through.
Well, I... Oh, go ahead, go ahead, Trustee Weisenberg.
It may have been difficult hearing the public comment, but I've heard Trustee Wigginton herself, and she quite clearly, I think, commented that I feel comfortable voting on this tonight.
Okay. Thank you for that, Trustee Weisenberg.
Anyone else?
I just would like to second what Trustee Weisenberg is saying, like, it's really hard to hear when someone's at the podium, and Chief Decker can go in and out just a little bit, but hearing you and Trustee Wigginton is clear as can be.
And I just want to, Trustee Weisenberg had mentioned, Trustee DeVore, that he's comfortable moving forward. Are you okay moving forward with this vote tonight?
Um, yes, I am also comfortable moving forward.
Okay. Yeah, and I would add that earlier today, I would have asked you all for a deferral, knowing that two trustees and not knowing who else was going to be absent, but they're both participating remotely, so I think it's proper to go ahead and hold the vote.
Yeah, and I agree with you, Mayor Phelan, and I appreciate your caution, Trustee Kazam. I think with what Trustee Gett said, and kind of what I was saying earlier, the, this vote really just codifies for what we've done previously with the budget. This is, the budget has been passed, we were able to do it. This is really just giving some direction to our police and fire commissioners as to where we want to start the firefighters, is terms of salary. I think there is some reasoning behind that, so that the chief can make some administrative and fire decisions potentially in the future. And there's some legal ramifications for that. So I, I think that we've hashed this out, and I appreciate Trustee Reichert's comments as well, with some ideas to, for the future.
I will say that I did come in here with shared Trustee Kazam's concern about deferment. But if Trustee Weisenberg and DeVore both feel that they've heard what they need to hear, and feel confident that their vote will be what they want it to be, then I'm okay with not deferring.
Well, this, let me state that this was an extra step that I decided to take, because you all have approved the budget, you've budgeted the money, but I thought it would be a good idea to formally approve the hiring of three FTEs. So that was a step that I just decided to take, that probably, I don't know if council would agree, that probably really wasn't even necessary.
I don't know that it was legally banned, but I agree it's a good idea.
And I appreciate your, that, Mr. Mayor, as well. I think this is a, this decision that we've made, that we've labored on for many years. I mean, I was sitting in the audience while we were talking about attracting volunteers. This has been a thing that we've been working on for, I think, many terms. And I think it's a big decision. I think it affects, you know, where, where we go in the future. So I, I think it was wise to put it on. I do think, though, that we've set this money aside, and this is the option that we have before us, and this is the option. So I'm, with that being said, I call a question.
Anyone else? Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeVore.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Kazam.
Nay.
Trustee Reichert.
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
All right, that passes with one in opposition. Chief, I know you have another meeting, anything else you want to add before?
No, I appreciate it. As we move forward in the next process, starting now, the original date of August was best case scenario. I don't, I don't believe that we'll have them in the door on those days, or in the 1st of August. Looking at probably 1st of September before we can really, or 4th of September, yeah, a month back is what we were planning, because the testing and hiring process takes a while. But keep you all updated, if you have any questions at all. If, I want you to know, through this process, I appreciate honesty, I appreciate even when you disagree with me, because I've always felt that it gets us to a better resolution. So I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Wigginton, anything else under public safety?
A couple of things that I would just want to report on, just some updates. So the, and thank you, Chief. So we had our annual, or semi-annual cleanup, neighborhood cleanup, and our officers were out just making sure everyone was a Peoria Heights resident. We got some, a lot of things off the streets. I appreciate the police department in organizing that, and Chief, you organizing it with GNO. And then one other thing, we had Kiwanis up here for the bike safety event a couple of weeks back, right here in Tower Park, really good turnout. The police were, our department was up registering bikes. I think we had a good number of bikes registered with the, with the state. And Chief, correct me if I missed anything there.
No, definitely.
Okay, so, yeah, really good turnout, and a lot of, I think we touched a lot of people here in the Heights.
I attended it, and it was an absolutely wonderful time. Like, I think it was, it was great. My kids had fun and educational, and...
Great.
My son's bike got fixed. His training wheels, his training wheels aren't falling off anymore.
Okay, thank you. Mayor. The order of business tonight was a little bit out of the ordinary because of Chief Decker having to leave early, so we're going to go to administration and Trustee DeVore. Trustee DeVore, I'd ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent, consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
All right, there is. Any discussion on that, or would anyone like to pull any of those items on the consent Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
All right. Next is approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the Pleasure Driveway and Park District of Peoria and the Village of Peoria Heights. Trustee DeVore, I would ask for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement between the Pleasure Driveway and the Park District and the Village of Peoria Heights.
Second?
We have a second, Trustee DeVore, so please go ahead.
Okay, so this is an agreement between the district, the village. There is a state statute that says if you tow someone's car, you have to make it available to them always, like, within a 20, 24 hours a day. So the Park District has asked if during the hours of operation that they're not open, if we would be willing to let the towed car sit at the PD, and so, so that someone could come and pick up their car if we need to be. Administrator Sutton assures me that the Park District said this is a very minimal amount of cars, so we have agreed to aid them in this, so that they are compliant with state statute.
Thank you, Trustee DeVore. Yes, the Park District has adopted our administrative tow fee, so when they do tow a vehicle, which is minimal, they will have to come to our department, pay the fee, and we're, we're only giving them a release form, then they will take that to the tow company and get their vehicle back. We're not housing any vehicles in Peoria Heights. I think that was kind of, the way that was written was a little misleading. So talking to Chief Green, it's something that, you know, we can do. We'll not interrupt our operations, because they, we're talking single digits annually, so it's not anything that we're, it's going to cause us any problems. So they do, they do a lot for us, help us out in parades whenever we ask them, so I think it's the least we can do to step up and help them out in this area, so.
I, I think this is very generous, and I appreciate this, Chief, working with the Park District. They are a big part of our, of the Heights, in various parks throughout the Heights. This is, this is very minimal, but I do think this agreement really does benefit the Park District, and, you know, we're, we're good neighbors. So I was wondering, as far as the benefiting who, who's paying for the drafting of this ordinance? Who's paying the legal fees?
I spent 10 minutes reviewing it, I didn't draft it, Park District Council.
They did?
Yep.
Awesome, thank you.
Anyone else? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee DeVore.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Kazam.
Aye.
Trustee Reichert.
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next is Resolution 2024-05, a resolution approving an amendment to the real estate purchase agreement. Trustee DeVore, I would ask for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-05.
A second, please.
Second?
Okay, Trustee DeVore, go ahead.
Okay, so this is addressing the resolution that we have with Dave Williams and Lori Pearl for the properties that they have purchased for us. We did have a deadline before when single-family homes would be built on three of these properties. This is extending that agreement to April 30th of 2027, for them to complete those homes that they have promised to do on the properties that we built them.
Wayne, you worked on this, anything you want to add?
Yeah, there's, yeah, this was the five properties that were conveyed to Williams Brothers in 2019, so for various reasons, and we've discussed this a little bit, COVID being one, the economy being the other, for the housing market, you know, there may be a demand for housing, but a lot of developers aren't pulling the trigger yet to build those because of the market, the interest rates, material costs, things like that. So I think the same things have affected the Williams properties. Yes, three properties agreed to within three years to be constructed. The other two properties, one is on Ellen Court, which is adjacent to the, it backs up to the Williams properties on the east side, so they've requested this to be kind of held aside for maybe five years, until the other property may be under plan or developed by the Williams Brothers. And I think that's, it's a good idea, because sometimes you want a property for a pass-through, whether it's a public easement, a road, or a sidewalk, or some other reason, you may want to have that property available, depending on the development of the adjacent property. So that's five years extended. And then another property on Duryea, which is, actually, the Williams Brothers have acquired, I think, four properties immediately adjacent to that property. So really want to have, extend that a little bit to better plan those other properties for some sort of residential development. So again, that's, that's the extent of this agreement. Williams Brothers, as you know, and then Dave and Lori have owned several properties for residential development, so hopefully have some development movement soon on all those properties.
Questions?
Yes, Mayor, is there an enforcement clause in the contract so that if it's not done by 2027, this automatically comes back to the Heights, or we repurchase it, or how would that work?
I believe that's an option, council, that the, we can purchase the properties back.
We can repurchase, correct. $5,000 per lot.
Yeah, excuse me, council, I'm a part of that hearing, but is there a clause in the contract that that property automatically happens to 2027?
Yes.
The answer was yes, Trustee Weisen, the answer was yes, for, for a market of $5,000.
It's $5,000, it's not automatic, we have to exercise that option, so the board would have an option, that have, you know, the ability to discuss and formally, you know, approve the repurchase of the property, or decline. But yes, we do have that as a...
Thank you.
Anyone else?
And, sorry, one, one quick question, so, and then, mark two, line two and line three, the commercial properties can be extended for yet an additional five years?
Correct, they have right to double.
That, that extension needs to be told when? When would someone need to say they would need the additional five-year extension?
Yeah, I, I think we will have to draft something to record, and in that, I usually, I'm in a little 30 days, so we'll cover terms on that. They'll have to provide notice that they're exercising their right to extend the period of development. So we know when we exercise our right to mine that.
Right, right, okay, just to clear up, because I could see a point of contention there if future board, that timeline passed, and so, yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Madam Clerk?
Trustee DeBoer?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Reiker?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
That passes. Trustee DeBoer, anything else under administration?
No, Mayor, not today.
Okay, let's move on to Public Works. Trustee Reiker, first is a review of bids and award contracts for MFT seal coating. Ask for a motion to approve those?
I make a motion to approve the bid and award contracts for the MFT seal coating.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, go ahead, please, trustee Reiker.
I'm going to hand this off to Wayne. That's what I was told to do.
I'm not church my item, but...
Oh, or Jeff.
I can, I can begin, Chris, I don't know if you have anything to say, but I'd, I'd first start with Chris, please.
Yeah, they just, there are a couple bids in, and I think Herman Associates might be here to explain a few things if you guys have questions about them.
So, so I might add, you know, I found out, I wasn't directly involved in these bids, but there is a qualifications issue on, on this project. And you might know that, you know, the appropriate term when you bid a project is lowest qualified bidder. So there's other, typically, when you award Public Works contracts or other contracts, there's several things that you might consider, not just the low bid or the bid price. And in this case, I think it was discovered, and Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, that there was a prequalification issue related to the capacity of the lowest bidder. So IDOT audits most contracts that do, or most contractors that do work in the state on this, in the public realm, and capacity of the contractor is one of the, one of the prequalifications. So this particular contractor apparently has exceeded their capacity as determined by IDOT. So why would we be recommended a bid that didn't, didn't meet the requirements? I, I'm not sure there is a recommendation in this case. I mean, the, there is a, there is a bidder that achieves all the requirements, and that would be Cullen, and then another bidder that is the low bidder monetarily speaking, but has not achieved all the qualifications.
Well, I guess it's, it's the lowest responsible bidder, is that?
Correct. And you can consider, you know, any reasonable factor. It might be going to have representatives of Herman Associates across.
Okay, Jeff?
Kind of a long story, so bear with me, but you guys already have the bids in front of you, so...
Can you, can you put the microphone closer?
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, so we opened bids for the annual seal coat program on April 10th. You have those in front of you. I believe the low bid was 84, the next lowest was 109. The bidders, when they submit their bids, there's a number of forms they have to submit. One of them is a certificate of eligibility, which is basically a upper limit, if you will, of, of backlog that a contractor can take on within a given year. And that's calculated by a number of things, like, you know, equipment, labor, et cetera. When we got the bids, everything looked good on both Porter Brothers, who is the apparent low, and then R.A. Cullen, who is the next. It was brought to our attention that the apparent low bidder, this certificate of eligibility had listed, well, had listed, I believe, about $100,000 worth of work that, which they had secured already for this, this calendar year. It came to, it was brought to our attention that there are a number of bids that, that this contractor had already won by another peer in the industry. It was actually through Woodford County, we, we found this out. This particular contractor, at least from what Woodford County had tabulated, showed that they have about $3.7 million in, in backlog, whereas their IDOT capacity says 1.5 million. So it can lead you to believe that this contractor is overextended, and there's a potential that they may not get the work done. So there's, you know, there's a, a couple different ways you can look at it. That form where they report their, their backlog, I mean, it's, it's, it's on the honor system. We, we, we don't normally ever check it, to be honest with you, because, I mean, it'd be a research project. We'd have to search, you know, minutes of every community within two hours of here and add all that up. But we have credible evidence that, that this contractor does have considerably more work than what they're approved to do.
So who brought it to your attention?
Number one, R.A. Cullen did, and number two, Woodford County.
Counsel, I'm looking at you, this, this sounds somewhat out of the ordinary.
I've never experienced this before.
I mean, can you, that's almost interfering with the bidding process.
Well, I understand the capacity issue, and it's a legitimate issue. And our village engineer told us that, you know, we looked into this, Woodford County confirmed, but we don't have anything documentation-wise to rely on.
But if they're the low bidder and you award a bid to them, they're obligated to complete the work on time, are they not?
They are.
So how can you throw that bid out? Or how can you not consider it when they're the...
You absolutely have to consider it, and it's up to the board to decide, Jeff, based on the evidence that we have in front of us, being not documentary evidence, but the engineer has looked into it. Is that enough to award to the other bidder? And that's, that's a question each trustee has to answer.
This is more of a question to you, counsel, I mean, or, or maybe to our village engineer as well. As far as, to make a, a bid, everyone must be, use the same standard as far as pay, as far as their, I mean, we're all...
Yes.
Okay.
The prevailing wage act applies, they have to comply and, and provide certified payroll. So, so it's that aspect. We have the responsible bidder ordinance, so they have to provide certification of participation in the accreditation program, and I believe they did.
Yes.
Okay.
And, I mean, IDOT approves the same materials, right? I mean...
Correct, I mean, this is all administered through, you know, IDOT, being MFT money. We brought this issue up to IDOT with the, the, you know, the backlog being higher than their eligible amount. To be honest, they basically said that it's not their jurisdiction. They said, you know, the, the village as the awarding agency, that's, it's up to them. So they kind of, they, they didn't, it doesn't really matter to IDOT. I, I will say, this is the first time that we've encountered this issue, and the first time I've encountered it in probably 25 years.
Well, counsel, isn't it permissible if, if a bid's awarded to the lowest bidder, you can negotiate with them, if you're not comfortable, you go to the next one?
I, I would like to see an award conditioned on contractors approved by village council.
I mean, I, I don't know this company, I, I know Cullen, and I know them well. I know what kind of work they do, they do outstanding work, they've done a lot of work for us in the past, but this is something I have never seen, and, I mean, frankly, I don't like it coming this, this way to us at, at all. So I'm, I'm really disturbed about the, the whole process.
I agree, Mr. Mayor. I think I'm, I was not prepared for this type of conversation today. I have never really been involved in an open meeting where we are determining who gets a proposal for a seal coating of the streets. I mean, we've always had a bidder come to us, clear, I mean, when we get to the meeting, we, we have a tract, this work has been done. And I, seeing this, and, you know, seeing this out in front of me, and I, I too recognize R.A. Cullen's son, I know we've worked with them, and I know that as far as choosing a bidder, having that relationship and that past work, knowing their work product is something that can be seriously considered when awarding claims. But that being said, I was not prepared for this today, and I, I've never had this, while I've been on this board, happen.
Does this need to be acted upon tonight, counsel?
I, I would see the reason why, of course.
Well, I'm looking at you for a way out of this, because I'm really, I'm really uneasy about this, no matter what we would do. I mean, if you awarded to, to Cullen, you're subject to liability by the low bidder, right?
Absolutely.
How much time?
I would be happy to look into this, dig deeper, and find some answers for the next meeting.
So would that include a, a meeting with both bidders, or a...
Well, I'll, I'll make the proper phone call, certainly.
I would ask for a motion to defer this.
I make a motion to defer this?
Second.
All right, motion to defer is not debatable, so Madam Clerk, call the roll on deferment.
Trustee DeBoer?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Reiker?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, thank you, and thank you, gentlemen, for being here tonight. I apologize for this confusion, you shouldn't have to go through this, and we're, we're going to get this right the next time, whether you're awarded the bid or not.
Thank you, Chair, I appreciate it.
All right, trustee Reiker, we're still with you. The next is review of bids and award a contract for MFT spray patching, and ask for a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve to review bids and award a contract for the MFT spray code, spray patching.
One second?
Okay, and the lowest bid is in here. Chandler, Chris?
Yeah, the lowest bidder, I believe, was Midwest Spray Patching. Midstate, I'm sorry, Midstate, yeah.
I'm having trouble reading this thing, so...
Yeah, that's...
Either one of them didn't make sense to me, so...
Which they are the company that did this work last year.
So their bid came in $35,670.80, so I make a motion to approve.
And we got the second, did we not?
Yep.
All right, thank you. Any discussion on this? All right, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee DeBoer?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Reiker?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes?
Mayor, before we move on, I'm sorry, Superintendent Chandler, where is this, this taking place at?
The spray patching? It's over, I mean, multiple areas, it's not just in one neighborhood, it's throughout the village. We try and focus on the next seal coating, you try and get this down the year before you do the seal coating for the next year.
Okay, sorry, I should have asked that before we voted, but I forgot.
Anything else under Public Works? Superintendent Chandler, or trustee Reiker?
I can mention that we are locked in for ice picking the week after July 4th, that will begin as of right now. So like July 8th will be the next round of ice picking, as of right now.
And what area would that be?
That will be everything south of Lake in Peoria Heights.
Everything south?
Everything south of Lake in Peoria Heights will be done in that round.
Okay, thank you, let's, we'd be miscellaneous, any miscellaneous to come for the board?
Mr. Mayor, just one quick thing, and I, I had spoken to Wayne about this just briefly before the meeting. I've also spoken to trustee Kazam on this. There was an interesting article in the Peoria Journal-Star this week. Our neighbor's Peoria is doing a pilot program where they're going to be trying to do some community development with potentially some TIF districts utilizing those. I did reach out to Community Development Director Joe Doolin at the city of Peoria to kind of get an idea of how they're going to consider that. So I'd like to try to work potentially with trustee Weisenberg, it's his area with the parks and neighborhoods, to figure out a way where we can potentially utilize some of our TIF district money for our residents as well. So just very early stages yet, but I appreciate trustee Kazam, as well as Wayne, putting our heads together and seeing what we can do.
Anyone else?
Just a couple of updates, Mayor. Public Works updates, do expect a proposal, or have received a proposal from Hanson Professional Services for Prospect Road. So I think that contract will come for the board soon for that project. And then also, we did receive correspondence from the U.S. EPA District Office of Chicago for the earmark that we received for the water main along Route 29, so kicking off those projects.
Thank you, Wayne. I wanted to report that myself and Wayne and Mike Bailey did attend lobby days in Springfield recently. There were a lot of, of mayors and representatives from cities around the state. We heard from all of the legislative leaders on both sides of the aisle, in both the Senate and the House, and the governor also addressed our group. What I want to tell you is that every leader, and including the governor, said that the grocery tax is almost certainly going away. So that will be about a $300,000 hole in the budget, so that's just something you all need to be thinking about.
Will that also affect some of the revenue that we were projecting from Bex? Because they sell grocery items there?
That's a good question.
Or even like a Walgreens, like if, for those types of items?
Yeah, anything, so any of those stores that sell grocery items, they're taxed at 1%. And no matter how you feel about it, the governor said that he feels this is a very regressive tax. I think Illinois is only one of, Mike, do you remember, 11 states, or, it wasn't very many that had a grocery tax. So now, he did say he would agree that if local home role units of government wanted to have their own tax, they could, he would not oppose that. But for any, anyway, it looks like it could be a pretty serious shortfall on the revenue side. Any other miscellaneous? We'd be, again, a comment from the audience, if anyone is here tonight that would like to address the board, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and try and keep your remarks under five minutes.
Yes, I have a complaint. I don't really like to complain, but I've been dealing with this, and so has my neighbor for the last four or five years. I live on Marietta, 1407, I have a next-door neighbor that does not take care of her yard at all. I'm not perfect, but I would like her to take care of it. I have a bamboo weed that is coming over into my yard, and it's, it's very aggressive. I'm allergic to it, it grows 10 feet tall, and they, she will not do nothing about it. And so I've had to hire...
We'll have code enforcement come by tomorrow, is that okay?
Huh?
We'll have code enforcement come by tomorrow, is that okay?
Yes, I, I've had to hire, though, a lawn treatment people to try and get rid of it, at least from my side of the yard, along with pest control because of the weeds and the tall grass, and she has a lot of weeds now that are trees in her yard. So I wanted to bring that up, and hopefully something can be done about that.
Thanks for bringing it up to our attention. Thanks for bringing it to our attention. Do we have a contact number for you? If you, if you stick around, I'll get it. I'm pretty sure I know who you're talking about, and I'm, I'm pretty sure, because I think I just saw some fines come across my desk this week, so I'm sure I know the address. But if you could just stick around, just to make sure, and I'll follow up with code enforcement in the morning. There's some other things we can do.
Yeah, I tried to be patient.
If they're not doing it, then we, we have some other options, but if you could just stick around, I'll, I'll speak with you right after. And thanks for being here. In the future, though, you don't have to come to the meeting, you can call Village Hall and-
Okay, well, I, I, we've called several times, and so I thought it was about time that I did address it formally.
They may have been out there. Well, I think, I think it's, this particular property, I don't think it's, it's not being ignored, I, it's, they're being fined, but it's not taking care of the problem, and that's why I say we have other options. If they're not doing it, we can do it for them, and then, you know, send them the bill.
Yeah, he did take a weed whacker to the front a little bit, you know, but-
And this is-
That, that's nothing.
And I think this goes back more than even four years.
Yes, it does.
I think this goes back probably like six or eight.
But I've been patient up until now.
Right, yeah, no, I, I'm familiar with that, so if you could just stick around a second.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, sure. Anyone else? Hi, Bonnie. Yeah, come on, just so everyone can hear you at home, please come up to the microphone, Bonnie.
Yeah, I'm here about the same property over there. Not only is she, she's an elderly, okay, so she can't get really out there and do too much. But her son is living with her, and he's a young man. He got out there yesterday, he halfway cut the front yard. He left one weed standing in the front. The gate's off the backyard. The backyard is full of weeds, junk, that's crawling under her fence into this lady's yard, that's actually crawling underneath her walkway, and it's raising the concrete. This has been going on, like you said, chief knows, for about six years. And on the back where the garage is, those aren't just weeds, they're trees now, and they're growing clear up that property, that garage. Actually, there's not that much room between it and the, for the easement, but it's, it's a mess back there. The garbage is left, it's just an eyesore, and my husband went around the, the block where we live, and everybody's yard is taken care of. The weeds are taken care of, their grass is mowed. Now, he went out with the weed whacker, and it still looks like crap. Sorry to say that, but it is. So something needs to be done, not only with just cutting the grass, there needs to be something done with the weeds that are growing, that are invading her property and the way this looks. We have a lot of people that come to the Heights, to Heritage Mall, we live right by Heritage Mall. That is not a good sign for the Heights, you know? And that's not a good impression to make on them. And that's all I got to say, but I hope we can get something done.
All right, thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Craig Masters, fourteen oh four, is Marietta. The, to reiterate what she was saying, the, the garage on the alley used to be there, and it was tore down, and the same footprint along the alley was rebuilt, probably without a permit, oh, it's been six, eight years ago. And it is on the edge of easement, it does not have a setback. So from the edge of the garage to the alley is easement, and they have not taken care of it, and that's why the trees are growing there. So if you have anything large come up there, like, well, garbage trucks close, moving man or something, they're running into those trees and tree branches that are growing up, hanging on the easement, okay? And it's their responsibility to take care of that easement, okay? That's number one. What she was mentioning on the weeds and stuff, yeah, we fought that more than six years. Chief, you've, you've been sending guys down there many times, and this village has cut that grass before when it wasn't done, okay? Now, I don't know what they charge them, but evidently it's not enough to get the message across. Okay? Now, the other part to that is that my wife testified there a little bit, that it's an eyesore for the people that come to our community. Heritage Mall is a going place, and we like seeing the people there. We like the people walking, but they look at that weed mess, not a good sign for our village, okay? The other aspect to that is our, I'm branching out a little, our little park there on the corner, very well utilized, those people pull in with their kids, they come over and use it, might be for a half hour and gone. Sometimes it's packed, sometimes there's two or three, okay? That park is not being maintained well enough, as far as I'm concerned, to be a showpiece for our village. And the lot line between that and Kevin's that is growing up in the trees, which are tree of heavens, are very brittle trees, and weeds, needs to be taken care of periodically. It's, the kids go in there, and they pull out the, the brush and logs, we watch them, throw them at the roof on the slides and stuff, you know, to make noise, you know? And that, if it's cleaned out, it'll look nice. When you mow, excuse me, you gotta pick up the stuff first, you just can't cut the papers and stuff. The, when Matt was the coordinator, administrator here, we even made him an offer on, as a neighborhood, that we would take care of it. I've been down there, spent hours pulling the weeds out of it, picking up the tin cans that got shredded by the lawnmower, picking up the papers and stuff. I'm, I'm talking hours, okay, and several different times. And we made him the offer, I did, that I would pay for the mulch. Back then, it was six-hundred dollars, I'd already priced it, as long as they put up a sign that it was maintained by the neighborhood. A nice sign, but he wouldn't do that. So I said, okay, we'll just come and gripe about it, you know? But, but anyway, the, it's a showpiece, a lot of people use it. You don't see it all the time, you know? Sometimes it's sitting there, there's no way there. But, man, when people come over from, from our districts surrounding us, want to eat at Heritage Mall or drink, and they look at that, and their kids go over there, think, this place, we gotta come more often. We, we would like to see it a little better kept, okay? Or even expanded, you know? I know you had some thoughts one time about it, Mr. Mayor, but anyway, that's kind of that. The other thing is, none of that stuff, okay? I commend all of you, okay, for keeping a watchful eye on our funds and stuff, okay? Mr. Decker here, Chief Decker, I totally agree with him. We need to expand our stuff, just like we went through it with chief years and years ago. We need to keep the police department A number one, draws people here, okay? Now, when I look at my tax bill, I was shocked. It went down thirty-one dollars, and every one that went down pertained to your village, okay? Why aren't you keeping it level? That thirty-one dollars, if we got thirty-three-hundred homes, that thirty-one dollars, if every place had the same, would add it up to somewhere, you could do something with the money, you know? Our taxes aren't high. I've, I've looked at other places. Our water, our water is low compared to other places. Even though people talk about quality and stuff, you know, hey, my problem is solved on that, I don't have that problem like everybody else does. But the water, if you go to other communities, because I had a guy I worked with, he asked me, he said, what do you pay for your water? I said ninety dollars, just a few years back. He said, well, that's the same as I pay. I said, but yours is ninety dollars a month, mine is ninety dollars for three months. That's a big difference, okay? So you're running everything at cost, sometimes you have to bite the bullet and expand it. And being a resident, long-term, along with a lot of relatives that have went through this area, just like yours, Mike, I want to keep it there. I want to keep the quality up to where people want to come into this community. So I applaud you for doing a job. He needs money to upgrade that fire department, because we used to have a terrific volunteer organization, but days and times, people are too busy not to do it. Used to be, there was a heck of a community around fire volunteers, you know? And we've kind of lost a little of that, you know? So I'd like to see, I don't care if you raise my taxes, get that thirty-one dollars back, you know? You're, you, you gotta plan ahead, just like you're talking, you know? And I don't think anybody's gonna gripe about it if, if they see the results, you know? We know we can do it, don't we, Matt?
I hope so, Craig.
Look at when we did the thing for the, oh, that was another part, for the code enforcement, when we started that with the rental inspections, okay? When Matt was here, I went to all the meetings. I went to Peoria's, talked with Dooley, talked, went to Pickens, went to Morton's, all of their meetings there to find out how they was doing theirs, and get some facts and figures on that. And we arrived at the end that an officer for doing code enforcement, you know, this has been a few years back now, it's a start, was about ninety thousand dollars, and at twenty-five dollars a rental unit and stuff, we could pay for that, okay? So if you need money for another code enforcement officer, raise the fee, and maybe that will encourage people to buy rather than rent. That's just my thoughts, okay? And I appreciate your time, and you're doing a good job. Thank you.
Thanks, Craig, good to see you. Chris, would you mind getting over to the, the park this week and reporting back to us?
Yeah, I mean, we, we do maintain it every week. I mean, we do, we maintain all the parks. I, I understand the tree line you're speaking of, and I'm not sure how much of that is our tree line. I'd have to look into it for sure, because those may not all be our trees, if that makes sense to you or not. You know what I'm saying?
I know.
Yeah, yeah, it's, I, I do know the line, the tree line you were speaking of.
But people, given that, that own that, which is one of the primary trees.
Right, yeah.
We talked before, and, but they, they had no problem clearing it out, you know? They were like, hey, clear it out, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
And they are primary trees, they are not good trees, you know? We never had over, take them out, but, okay.
Right. We have cleaned up some trees down there, though, for sure.
You've done several times, and they, they're not great, and don't hate coming back, they're primary trees, you know, they, they produce problems.
Yep.
But, and I know there's been times that the guys have been down to work it all the way back, and it looks great for a while, but maybe we need some other kind of solution.
All right, we'll, we'll look, we promise we'll look into that and report back. Any other public comment tonight? Anyone else want to make comments to the board? Go once, twice? Comments are closed. Trustee Gatt?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is. All those in favor of the motion to adjourn signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We're adjourned.